Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for September the 8th, 2025. At this time, we'll have invocation given by Vice Chair Larry Yoder, pledge of allegiance following by Commissioner Kent Herman.
My kind and gracious special having followed, we appreciate the opportunity we have together tonight in order that we can conduct county business. Be with us, lead us, and guide us that we make the decisions that are important to our county and are beneficial to our citizens. Be with our first responders. Our first responders have had a rough couple of weeks with a lot of death in our county from accidents and different things, people seriously injured. Be with those who have lost loved ones due to these instances, and be with those first responders. Give them the things that they need that they can cope with the scenes and the things that they see to help them to continue the job that they do. Be with our law enforcement, our leaders in our country, in our state, and in our county, and with those leaders across the world to bring peace and harmony throughout our world. Rest all these things in thy name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have commissioners report, and I'm going to lead off. I do want to thank our EMS and firemen that showed up at my own personal residence for my own self just the other week. I really do appreciate that and the level of service they provide. I don't remember them coming, but I do remember them, you know, later on and leaving. So I do appreciate that, and I will go ahead and I put this out there on social media also, but fire ants are in our county, and they are an army and force to be reckoned with. And if you get into a nest of them, they might come out on the winning side, and you may not fare so well. And that's what happened to myself, but I do appreciate the level of professionalism that our EMS currently has, and you never really appreciate that till you actually use it yourself. So, thank you. Any other commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I went to the State Association of County Commissioners meeting. It was a very good meeting, a lot of information, a lot of different things talked about. They talked about the budget and how that was going to affect the counties as it comes down from the federal to the state and into us. And it was just very, very informative, a very good meeting. That's all I have. I did go to the concert Saturday night. If you missed the concert, most of us older folks, that music was right up our alley because that's what we listened to for a long time. So it was really good. ZZ Top will have a band there in a couple of weeks, so come on out and see that and come and enjoy it. It's free. The county's paying for it, and we'd like to see you out there. It's a lot of fun, you know, and just because it's football season, you know, you're only going to miss two hours of a game, that's all right, and you can enjoy it. Come get you a recliner, a chair, and sit down and enjoy, and plenty of food and plenty of activities to go on that makes it a very good night to spend with your family and watch those little ones enjoy their show. And of course, our splash pad, I will say this for our splash pad this year, I don't know where all those little kids came from, but if you'd go by there during the daytime during the summer, it's been unbelievable, and the number of little kids have been at our splash pad. That thing stayed busy every single day, and it's a great contribution to Alexander County and to our kids. And that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I went to the Fire Chiefs' meeting on August the 21st. It was a real informative meeting. We found out round two of disaster recovery grants have been awarded, and thank goodness, all of our fire departments in the county received part of them. Some of them is going to buy new generators. There's two new ATVs coming, a new brush truck. One of them is going to add some to their fire station, so hopefully, and some extra training is going to be paid for with some of this. So hopefully, in the next year, maybe this will help some with our ISO ratings to get our citizens' insurance to come down some. So I think that was good.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to add one more thing, if you don't mind, please. When we were at the association meeting, Jennifer Harmon, our financial guru, who is very, very, very intelligent, does an outstanding job, she was recognized that night as one of our outstanding employees, and our president, outgoing president, he decided this year that what they would do is they would recognize one person from each county all the way across the state as being a hero to that county and rising up and taking care of things in a time of need. And Jennifer's done an outstanding job. Of course, most of you know that we were without a county manager at this time, and she worked on the budget very, very hard and very diligently and provided our county commissioners here with the information that we needed so that we could pass the budget. And she was recognized that night, and it was quite an honor to be there, see her recognized.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I will say one thing. Not a real serious topic, but false recreation sports season started, and, you know, with children, we're now, you know, the levels are now frequent, frequenting, excuse me, you know, ballparks again. And I just want everybody to know that I have yet to pull into Bethlehem Park when there weren't people playing pickleball. And I came through Taylorsville about 10:45 on a Thursday night, a couple of weeks ago. And at tennis courts beside the central office for the school, you know, the school board office, there were people out there playing pickleball on tennis courts at 10:30, 10:45 at night. So this whole pickleball thing's, you know, there obviously is something to it. But yeah, Bethlehem Park, the pickleball courts, if anything, will be worn out before too long. Well, they shouldn't be, but, and I just want to say that Bethlehem Park is so improved from what it was. As a parent of recreation kids, you know, I appreciate what was done there, as well as, you know, I've heard numerous people say the same thing.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. You've had a chance to look through it. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the adoption of the budget of the agenda as presented.
Second. First and second. On favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have public comment period. We had two to sign up, so I'm going to call their names to make sure that they're not in here. Mr. Paul Kelly and William King. We have no one for public comment. Next item of business is a resolution to support NC Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant for Urgent Care of Mountain View given by David Moose, Consolidated Human Services Director.
Good evening, commissioners. On July 14th, you adopted a resolution in support of a formal application to the North County Department of Commerce for a building reuse grant, giving you an update on that as well as bringing forth a new resolution tonight. The application was submitted, and we have received a tentative offer of award. There have been a few changes. There were positive changes. The original grant amount and the award, the award has increased. So we originally applied for $140,000 for 14 new jobs. Typically, these are awarded at $10,000 per job. The North County Department of Commerce, in their review of our application and the project, felt that it warranted additional funding and has offered us a total of $175,000. So that necessitates the adoption of a new resolution to authorize our 5% match requirement. So this new resolution recognizes that the board adopted a resolution on July 14th in support of the formal application, and also authorizes the 5% match required per the grant agreement totaling $8,750. So that would be the match required for us to accept a grant in the amount of $175,000 for the project. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, just have one question. How long is it until it'll be opening up? Do you have any idea?
That's not been communicated yet. I can follow up on that and find out. I know they were wishing to move very quickly on it there.
We did take a tour of the building, a couple of us a while back, and where the urgent care is going, and it didn't seem like a lot of modification that was needed for the existing building. So that'll probably help speed up the process somewhat. Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution to support the North County Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant for Urgent Care of Mountain View.
Second. We got a first and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, sir.
All right, thanks, sir.
Next item of business will be a resolution authorizing execution of opioid settlement funds and approving the third supplemental agreement given by county attorney Ben Falkenberry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. The resolution before you is a revised, it approves the signing on of a revised settlement. As you are well aware, the county has entered into settlement agreements with opioid manufacturers and distributors since 2001. That projected amount has exceeded $150 million in additional funds to North Carolina over the next 15 years. This resolution will allow us to sign on to eight settlements with generic opioid manufacturers which are expected to generate approximately $23 million in additional funds to the state. There's a share that the state will keep 15% of those funds and then allocate 85%, which will go directly to local governments such as Alexander County. Those expenditures are restricted to approved opioid abatement and remediation activities. The Purdue-Sackler settlement is already covered under a previous agreement that the county has entered back in 2021. The new manufacturer settlements require execution of a supplemental agreement which extends the original agreement to these additional settlements. The county must adopt a resolution authorizing either the county manager or myself to sign on and execute all related documents, and the funds will be deposited in the county's existing special revenue fund created for opioid settlement dollars. There's no spending deadline, and staff continue to evaluate strategies to ensure the greatest impact in addressing the opioid crisis. I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution, which would allow myself or the county manager to execute all documents necessary, including the supplemental agreement, and provide those documents to the settlement administrator.
Any questions or concerns from the board?
This is going to work out real good for Alexander County. It's going to help with the problems that we have here in the county with drugs.
If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented by Mr. Falkenberry.
Second. First, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next item of business will be given by our county attorney, Mr. Falkenberry. It'll be our budget ordinance amendment of number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment number seven amends the general fund expenditures and revenues to increase the budget for the North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs state grant to match the funds available to spend in fiscal year 2026. This grant award began in the latter part of last fiscal year and will be completed in this fiscal year. It also increases the sheriff's office budget for a grant from the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police Performance and Wellness Program. This grant will cover the first year of a personnel management software program that the sheriff will use for his staff that will help in monitoring and ensuring training and other necessary personnel information. It's also to increase the Human Resources Department budget for speakers on wellness topics at the wellness fair and employee appreciation events with funds received for an insurance rebate.
Question on the sheriff's grant. Is that, I know that's for the first year. Is that going to be an ongoing?
That agreement, the agreement with the software program is for one year, and then we'll reassess after that.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the amendments, the budget amendments as presented, budget amendments, amendment number seven.
Second. First and a second. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, we're talking about the VA there, and there are VA lady has been appointed to a committee to do more studies, and I should have said something earlier, but she's been appointed on a committee that's formed by the governor and to make sure that our veterans are getting their benefits the way they should because some of them have been missing out on them. So that's going to be real good for our veterans here in Alexander County, that she's on that committee because she'll have firsthand information.
Thank you, sir. Let's see. Consent agenda, beginning by Mr. Falkenberry as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your consent agenda is tax abatements and adjustments for $23,784.82 as well as tax refunds in the amount of $1,537.95 for the period of July 24th to September 1st, 2025. You also have the minutes from our August 4th, 2025, regular meeting. There is also board and committee appointments to the CBCC Board of Trustees, the JCPC, Animal Control Advisory Board, Jury Commission, and Consolidated Human Services Advisory Committee. There's also line item transfer report for August 2025, some very minor changes to the fire prevention and protection ordinance. There is also a preparedness month 2025 proclamation and the renewal of an annual contract with Alexander County Schools to provide funding for school nursing services. That is three registered school nurses positions. That contract does have a $150,000 max funding, but that is a wonderful contract that we're entering to keep our students healthy at schools.
You've heard the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve it as given.
Second.
First and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Falkenberry, well, no, we, yep, we do need adjournment from this meeting. Then we'll call to order our consolidated human services.
That's correct.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
Second.
And to enter into the consolidated.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Now we'll consider ourselves seated in our consolidated Human Services Board meeting, and at this time, we will ask Health Director Billy Walker to come up and give us our public health report.
Good evening. I am going to do a quick report tonight and then let Emily Vick do the communicable disease annual report. So my report's going to have an organizational report, financial report, a little accreditation update, and then we have two situational reports to give you. The organizational update, I have advisory board member update. We have given an engineer name to the clerk, to the board for approval, and we are still looking for an ophthalmologist. In-house staff, we are still looking for a licensed clinical social worker. We have, we had a medical office assistant in the lab that she resigned, and we are not going to repost that position due to restrictions of funding from the state. And I had a PHN2 that was a part-time, no benefits position. I'm not going to repost that job as well due to funding. We do have a new employee that is the grant position, the school-based dental health coordinator. She started Monday, the 18th of August. Financial updates, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about that, that just the local impacts of the federal funding is just some losing state programs and initiatives. We've lost some state consultants and not sure how that's going to trickle down to local funding, so that's why I'm not going to replace those positions at this time. Accreditation updates. The state has made some changes in accreditation, and one of that is how they're going to do the dashboard. So there's a dashboard change coming. We've really not seen how that's going to affect us and kind of nervous because we are the first to go through that application process. So we have been submitting to the state for the last three years, all of our data. We upload everything into those benchmarks on the current dashboard. And so we found out this week that the new dashboard will begin with us, fall of 2026. So not sure how that's going to go yet. We also found out that they approved the new law to go from 147 benchmarks down to 45, which that's great. Not sure how the site visit's going to go. I know some of y'all have been involved before when we had to bring you in for interview processes during those site visits, but they didn't really tell us how that was going to go either. But we definitely will keep you informed with those if you have to come in for interviews, being our board. We are on par for now with all the documents that we need, but again, with that new process, we are a little nervous because they may want us to take everything out of the current dashboard and re-upload everything and try to make 147 documents match 45. So we are hoping they don't go that route, but it looks like they will. So, but we're within the 12-month process, so we will be, every time we come, we will be giving you more information on the accreditation piece. And Emily Vick is our communicable disease nurse. She is going to update you on our communicable disease report.
All right. So I'm going to give you the, it's our 2025 report, but it's actually for the 2024 calendar year. Communal diseases are defined as dangerous to the public's health and must be reported. Communal diseases are illnesses that are spread from person to person or animal to person, can be from direct contact with sick people, breathing in airborne viruses and bacteria, or contact with blood and other body fluids. The health department's role is to investigate these diseases, determine if control measures are needed, determine if there's been outbreaks, and we complete our reports and send into a statewide system for the state to close out and review. This is important because prevention and control of the communal diseases is one of our most important functions, and so hopefully, we can control the spread of illnesses. This is our look at our CDs and STDs in 2024. And other than some CRE cases, which were in our long-term care facility that we have here in the county, no links were identified in any of the other CDs that we have. The next slide is a case analysis since 2019, just comparing year to year through 2024. So for all these years and for as long as I've been here, chlamydia and gonorrhea remain the most prevalent of our CDs in North Carolina and in Alexander County, and then salmonella is our most reported foodborne CD. We do lots of education. We do education in our schools, social media. We have a Facebook page, and we also have a health department webpage in our clinics, and we also have lots of community events where we put out lots of education. So the public health emergency of COVID ended us having to do individual case counts in May of 2023, but we do still investigate all outbreaks that are in congregate living facilities. In 2024, we had four COVID-19 outbreaks in our long-term care facilities. No cases of MPOCs in Alexander County, and then I know you've heard a lot about measles in the past several months. As of August the 5th, which is when this PowerPoint was put together, there had been 1,356 confirmed measles cases in the United States in 41 states. There has only been one confirmed case in North Carolina and thankfully, none in Alexander County. And the last time that the CDC updated their webpage, which is September the 2nd, there had been 1,431 cases in 42 states. So it does still continue to rise, but it has slowed down. Flu vaccine, we recommend it to everybody six months of age and older for every flu season. We always carry doses from six months all the way to 65 and older, which gets the high dose, and we'll have that again this year, and we'll be starting to do that on October the 1st. And then all vaccines that are recommended for children, and then many of the vaccines that are recommended from adults are available at the health department. You can just give us a call and make an appointment if you need anything.
And our last situational report is our community outreach events. We've already completed several in August. Have lots coming up in September and October, and of course, that's us going out in the community and educating our citizens how to remain healthy. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
At this time, we asked for a DSS report. Trina Riddle, Economic Services Program Administrator, and LaKeisha Feaster, am I saying that right? Thank you. Great. CPS Program Manager.
Good evening, commissioners.
I'm sorry I did not introduce you.
I'm sorry.
I did not see it on there.
Don't worry about it. It's okay. I'm here this evening, I told you all maybe three months ago that I would come back to give you some updates about House Bill 612. So I brought the experts with me. So I brought the experts with me because they know the most about the areas that it may or may not affect the most. So Lakeisha Feaster is our new Program Manager for Child Welfare and Adult Services. So she's going to give us an update on what's going on with House Bill 612 for Children's Services and Adult Services.
I may get there in a moment.
So basically with House Bill 12, it talks about the rare cases that sometimes when children's parents' rights have been revoked, there's a small population where they can have those rights reinstated. As far as the actual ramifications behind it, they haven't finally ironed out all that. But that's part of House Bill 12. House Bill 12 also talks about how it re-backed and redefines some of our definitions for abuse, neglect, and dependency. As far as caretaker roles, it took away part of the allegation of substance abuse alone. It has to actually show impact to the actual child. Trying to think of some of the other things that House Bill 12 had on it.
Those were the main ones, yeah.
And then, like I said, the adoption piece of it, which is, it's very rare that you have parents who have had their rights terminated, but they're reinstated again. But they are looking at possibly allowing those parents who have shown significant growth after their rights have been terminated and done significant improvements, having those rights reinstated. Next slide. Our vacancy rate has been at 7% for the past month. We're still hiring qualified Child Welfare and Adult Services social workers. We're getting very limited applications. However, we're hoping to get more as we start having people graduate in December. Currently, we have 49 children in custody of DSS. Eight of those children are in the LYNX program. Four of them are in the 18 to 21-year-old program. We currently have 10 foster homes that are licensed by Alexander County, and we have five children that are currently in the adoption process pending. In APS, we have 11 wards currently. These are some of our new hires. Andy Goss in March. We had Alfonso Martinez in March. Also, he is APS. Esmeralda Garcia is Adult Service, oh, not Adult Service, I'm sorry, Child Protective Services in July. Nicole Robinson came to foster care in April. Isaac Bosch came to Child Welfare in May. Marguerite Blanter came in July, foster care. Do you remember that? I started July 7th, so I've been here a little over two months. And then Julia Hackett came in July as well to foster care. I'm not sure if you're familiar, but several years ago, North Carolina came out with NCFAST, which was a program to link almost all counties with a, more like a documentation record, where we could interact with each other without having to send paper records and fax and an email. It was a combined link. Probably about three years ago, they went away from that, and they've been trying to come up with a new program, and it's called PATH NC, which is Partnership and Technology Health of North Carolina. Alexander went live with this program August 15th, August 18th? 11, okay. We are still seeing some bugs being worked out. But it's nice when you can talk to other agencies electronically and there's no delay. You're not having to worry about whether or not the fax went through or emailing somebody, we're able to click a button and that report or that assist pops up in that other county's systems. Or if another county takes a report for our county, they can send it directly over to us. Like I said, the state is still working out some of the kinks and bugs. I think there's two more rollouts before the whole state will be on the system. But so far, it is working really well for our department.
Good afternoon, I'm Trina Riddle. So if you'll go to the next screen, Chad, I'm going to start with the Economic Services new hires. We only have four. We haven't had a lot of turnover on our side. So we had Bambi Bum Garner, who began in July, Amanda Gilbert, who began in August, Betty Atkins began in April, and Sherri Reese began in June. And we're glad to have all those with us. The only updates I have really are with the Big Beautiful Bill. It may affect our Medicaid. So we currently have around 10,000 Medicaid cases. And the one big thing they're talking about is putting in work requirements for individuals that have children 14 years and older. If your child's 14-year-old, you're going to be required to do so many work hours a month in order to continue to receive your Medicaid. That's not due to go into effect until December 31st of 2026. And to be honest, I think as long as I've been there, it will probably change about 10 times between now and then because it's never the first thing they say it's going to be. And also, they're talking about going back to six-month reviews. So when I started a long time ago, we did six-month reviews on every case. We looked at it every six months to redetermine their eligibility. Over the past several years, we went to year certifications so that we don't look at the case at all for a year. So we're going to be going back to six-month evaluations. That also is not set to begin until December of 2026, which that will double our workload for our workers. We currently have about 15 workers that actually do research. So you're going to double their workload. And like I said, that I think will stay in place. I'm not sure about the other as far as the work requirements. I feel like they'll probably tweak that several times before we begin it. And that's really all I have. We don't really know anything else yet. They haven't really told us anything. So we're kind of waiting and seeing, just like everybody else. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about Medicaid.
No questions. Mr. Motion.
I just wanted to jump up here. I apologize for the technical difficulties earlier. We apparently had some issues with the transmission of the information when that was submitted. But I did want to say and just mention that Director Jerel and I recently attended a Consolidated Human Services Alliance meeting, which is a meeting of all the consolidated directors in the state as part of an alliance. And that House Bill 1, or One Big Beautiful Bill, as it may be known, was a big topic of discussion. I know that's a big concern for the board. It is something that we are staying on top of. Unfortunately, as we've stated several times here tonight, you've heard from multiple angles that there's just not a lot of information yet. Even from DHHS, they're giving out projections, but it's kind of a wait-and-see game. And so that's our intent right now, is to wait and see what the local impact actually is before we come forward with any potential recommendations for staffing changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, I guess this is for, you got, I mean, it's, so the Bill 612, is it House Bill 612? Okay. I'm just, I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm just wondering what the thought process was behind some, I mean, you know, this is a bad thing to say, but thinking about it from Raleigh's perspective, you know, is an attempt to reduce the number of children in foster care? Is it, you know, just because, when I understand completely that the, that, that the goal is to reunite families.
Correct.
You know, but I just wonder how many cases there are where there's substance abuse that the child's not, that the child's not affected in some way, shape, or form. You know, because I have adopted children that one test positive for 10 substances. And you know, when you look at the emotional and you look at the, I mean, not just the physical, but you look at the emotional, you look at the, you know, yeah, the mental, the emotional, that sounds just, if you ask me, it just sounds stupid. But then the other question, at what point, if a parent's, if parents, you know, parental rights are terminated, I mean, at what point do, do they, you know, can they potentially get their parental rights back? I mean, because, you know, you guys have five children right now that are in the adoption process. Well, I would assume, once they're adopted legally, then they, then their, you know, the biological parents couldn't be reinst, you know, their parental rights to that child could not be reinstated. Or, you know, I mean, I'm just, you know, because I'm like, not to mention the process from my experience, you know, you're talking a year to 18 months to two years. And no offense, but deadbeat parents get more than enough chances and more than enough time to not do much at all. To keep, you know, and I just, I just don't understand. I don't want, I just am dumbfounded by, you know, some of the, some of the House Bill 612 information that you just shared. Because it just doesn't make sense to, to some of us, I guess.
Well, to a lot of us either. But the state says it was done to provide more oversight. They felt that the counties needed more supervision in certain areas. And due to certain things, this is part of the reason for House Bill 612. That was, there was a federal audit done some years ago. And one of the things it talked about was North Carolina doesn't have any oversight. So we didn't have a system to talk to one another. So that was the reason they started NCFAST, but that didn't work. So then it went to PATH NC. And they believe by getting all 100 counties in this hub, and we're supposed to be, it's supposed to make us, we're supposed to screen reports the same. That's what it's supposed to be for. Will that happen? Probably not. Probably not, because there's some kinks in the system that they still need to work out. So it was also said that House Bill 612 will now give foster parents more rights. So we'll have to wait to see if that's true. So I don't agree, I don't disagree with you. I agree with you.
Which, I mean, there are probably some aspects of it that are, that are very positive. You know, I don't know, because if, if it's anything like most bills that, that do make it through, there's 697, you know, different aspects to it because there had to be this added and that added and this added and that added for, you know, all the folks, all the folks that wanted something stuck in there to agree to vote for it. Because I said, you know, but, and did I hear, did I hear correctly, there are 10,000 Medicaid?
There's 10,000 cases. There's about.
In Alexander County?
Yes. But now, one person could have more than one case potentially because an adult could be on MAD, which is Medicaid for the disabled, and MQB, which pays their Medicare premium, and that counts as two cases. So we have about 9,000 individuals.
Let's come to the podium, please.
For everybody in radio land.
Sorry. So we have over 10,000 cases, but that could potentially be one person on two cases. Because, like I said, if they're receiving MAD, Medicaid for the disabled, and they're also getting MQB, which is a program that pays for their Medicare premium, that's two cases for one person. So, but we still have over 9,000 individuals receiving Medicaid in our county currently.
So basically, one in four.
Yes. So we do have a lot of.
So one in four, one in four citizens in Alexander County is on Medicaid.
Yes. And with this new requirement of the work requirement, it's going to cut out a lot of those individuals. Because, you know, when Medicaid expanded, we added on a lot of people in our county because they didn't have to meet anything but the income limit. They didn't have to be disabled anymore for, if they didn't have children under 18. So with this new rule, if it goes the way they say, a lot of them will not be eligible unless they go back through the disability process and they're determined disabled by the state. Because we don't determine that in our agency. We send all the debt records to the state, and the state determines if they're disabled. So that will cut out a lot of our individuals if that goes through.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll ask for our senior center report by Kristi Hunt, Senior Center Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so first up, we have our Christmas in July craft fair. That was a lot of fun. Our seniors really enjoyed that. We had almost 300 people attend. So thank goodness it was outside, too. Our parking lot was full. We probably had more than 300, but you know, it's hard to tally everybody that comes through. This was the first year that we had food trucks available. So that was good. People seemed to like that. I, of course, loved the homemade ice cream truck. My favorite. And the next one, this just talks about some of more of our activities. Our sewing class, we have a new sewing class. We have our crochet class, you know, they have two days that they do. They absolutely love it. They're actually helping me with a project right now for a conference I have coming up. They're making me some flowers to take, some crochet flowers. Card, card games have been very popular. We've, we've had a lot of them. And, and it's, they're there every morning, even though we designate it at 1:00, they'll show up at 8:00, ready to play. So it's okay, we enjoy it. Book club's doing great. Computer classes, our seniors are loving these computer classes, especially the one-on-one help. And it's really encouraged them to use their computers more. And so you will see later in our participation numbers, we are counting a lot of our online participation now. We're kind of out of space, I think everybody knows that. And so we're trying to get more creative on ways we can make sure we get these resources to every senior that we can. And so we're doing some more online activities. And I'm actually playing with an idea of doing some trivia classes on there. So we're going to have some more fun with it. It'll be good. Our musicians' jam, we have two evening events in the summer now. We try to make sure we leave before dark. Some of us have trouble driving in the dark, so I'll make sure that we try to, we get out of there before then. But each night that we had it, we had over 100 people participate in this. It was wonderful. You can see, we had good crowds there. If you've not watched our videos on YouTube, please do. They're, they're really enjoyable. The musicians love it. They love being able to come out in the evening like this and play. And we pretty much have to run them out of there at 8:00. So they would stay, I think, all night and play if we'd let them. But it's, it's a great time. And we've had sponsors that's purchased the food, you know, that's either made the food or purchased the food. So we've, we've really done great with that. Okay, and our next one, this just tells about some of our exercise classes. Tai Chi is, is very, very popular. Of course, our regular exercise classes are too. But the Tai Chi is one of those things that doctors highly recommend for everybody. And if you, if you have never tried it, come by and try it with us. It's, it's more than what you think. Yes, it's a form of martial arts or whatever, but you know, there's only a few punches in there. So we try not to teach them to fight too much. It's just the stretching and the flexibility, the balance is just the most important thing. As we get older, we tend to fall a little bit easier. That balance helps. So cardio drumming's going to pick back up soon, and we're going to do great with that. Okay, the next one, our MetAsyst event. This was a lot of fun. I really, I was really glad that we got the extra grant money to host this. It's not a cheap event, so. It's not a cheap event, so I'm really glad we had something that paid for it, that didn't cost the county anything. We had 684 people participate. And like I said, it, that's one of those things that it's hard to actually count, that's really not counting the children that came to it, too. But we were told that this was a record number of people for any of these Med Assist events. So I'm very proud of that number, very happy we had so much participation. We could not have done it without of our, all of our volunteers. We had so many senior volunteers there, you can see them sitting at the table. They were, they were done absolutely amazing for us. But we really worked hard to get the numbers that we had. We printed flyers and made sure that we drove stacks of them to every school. So I really wanted to teach, to reach the children with that, too. We took them to doctor's offices, pharmacies, anybody that would let them, let us put them there. Okay, next up, our Diamond Tours trip. The next one we have is actually next week, and that is going to Vermont. So that one is, should be a good trip. We've got a nice full van for that one, so, or a nice full bus for that one. And they should have fun with that. Day trips, we've really enjoyed. Had the privilege of getting to drive the Greensboro Science Center trip last week, and we had a ball. So that was good, and I get to take them to the zoo, too, at the end of this month. So really looking forward to that. And next year, we're going to go to Ireland. So this is a first for us, to go overseas anywhere, but I'm hoping, we've had a lot of interest in it, and I'm hoping that we can really get out and go. The good thing about this trip is, if one person decides to go, then the trip will still go. With the Diamond Tours, we have to have a certain number to fill the bus, and we've been struggling a little bit with that to get enough people to go. But with this one, if one person decides they want to go, then, then they can. And we've actually already had several that's paid their deposit. So I look forward to that. I think it'll be good. It's for any age, even though it is designed for people over 55. Ice cream socials always...
Kristy, what's the date on that?
I'm so sorry. I didn't put that on there. It's next September. It's September of 2026. If you want to come by and get a flyer, you're welcome to, and you can also share them wherever you want to. I'm hoping to go on that one. We'll see, though. Ice cream socials, of course, big hit. This is when the grandkids can come out, and we had full houses both days. It, it was fabulous. I think we ended up with about 100, and if I'm remembering this correctly, 158 people at the one in Taylorsville. So, and we had some that come in after, we were already putting everything up. We actually ran out of one flavor. I never run out. And then we ran out this time. So it was, it was great. It was, it was really nice. Candle making, we had 18 people to participate in that, but they did make several candles to take home. So it was a lot of fun. Okay. Medicare open enrollment, our extremely busiest time of the year. Always happy that we can help people and help people save money. That's what we're here for. Last year, we, we did help over 400 people. I'm hoping we can even surpass that this year. We just like to work our fingers to the bone. It's okay. And of course, every day, we're seeing people new to Medicare, you know, their benefits, anything like that. I helped a lady today. She has a plan that gives her additional over-the-counter benefits, and she didn't understand how to use it, so I helped her with that. Okay, we're, our party this year, we're going to have a hoedown. Our musicians will be coming in to play for us, and we're going to have lots of games and prizes and food, so it should be a lot of fun. So if anybody wants to come by and join us for that, it's going to be from 9:00 to 1:00 on the 10th. All right, Medicare savings. Of course, you know, I had to turn this in a little early, so I didn't get August numbers in there. But from January through July, we're still looking pretty good. 160, over $166,000 saved, and we've already had 206 contacts. So we will just keep right on trucking with that. Now, the next one I'm going to show you, this one's, looks a little bit odd, because the way that they're, that we report our numbers to you, I usually go January through December. This is through SHIP. This is our county goals. CC means client contacts, and they report, I think it's, let's see, I have, it's on here somewhere. It's April through March. So April 1st through March 31st. So that's why, if you look at it and the numbers look a little bit different, then that's why. So like I said, the, the CC means client contacts. And you can see there's like, the 5% of our goal for 25, 26, is going to be 437 people. Last year, we already had reported 1,277. So we more than surpass what our goals are. And SHIP is very happy with that. And so that means that we're doing, we're doing what we should be doing. The bottom, the PAM, that's Public and Media. And that's how we report that. We have to, we have that certain goal that we have to meet or that we should meet. And every year, we have billed all that, and we, you see now, we're over 5 million on that. So I think we're doing okay. The next one, I'm sorry.
Are those goals, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'll talk fast.
Are those goals, are those goals set by SHIP?
They are. They are.
Well, they need to, they need to toughen up our goals a little.
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
I mean, we're showing them up pretty bad.
Hey, yeah, we, we aim to do that. But, you know, they, they, it's amazing what some counties do and what some counties don't. I'm not saying anything bad about any other county. I know we all work hard and we all do the best we can. But it's like, one of the reasons why we were, we managed to get more of the SMP grant was because some counties chose not to take it. And so the person that's in charge of that there calls me, and he's like, you know, what can you do with this? He said, "You always prove what you do." And Alexander County always does above and beyond what we need to do. So he's like, "How much can you use?" And I said, "I'll take every dollar you can give me, because I can spend it." And we've, we've proved everything that we can do, right down to our T-shirts. They're using those for OEP best practices. They're using our intake form for best practices that they're using for examples. So I think we're doing okay. All right, our participation numbers continue to grow up. Like I said, you're going to see that big spike there. We're over 11,000, but that does include our online participation. And like I said, our, our seniors have really took to using their computers, so they're liking that, and they're watching more, they're participating more on Facebook, they're participating more by watching our YouTube videos. So we're doing good there. We're trying to make sure that we offer as much as we possibly can offer, and we know we do have some people that are homebound, that can't come out. So we are teaching them how to use their smart TVs and how to get on there and see things that they wouldn't, you know, that they could see if they could come out and join us, and some of them just can't. So we're doing our best to make sure we can, we can help provide that. Okay.
So question?
Yes.
Go back to that slide, Chad.
Participation?
On the participation?
Yes.
Down at the bottom, it says you're up 17, well, over 17%?
Yes.
That's taken out the online use?
Probably.
Okay.
This was done right before I went out.
I was looking at your numbers across there, comparing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I probably just didn't, yeah. That part I didn't, I don't think I added that part on my own, so had a little help with that one.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're doing okay, though. We're doing our best to keep up with everything and keep everybody healthy and happy and moving right along. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
At this time, we'll ask our county attorney to take us into closed session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A, 3 and 4, I ask the Board for a motion to go into closed session to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industry or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations. I do not anticipate any action following closed session. Do we have a motion?
Same move.
Second. Home favor, right hand? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.